How are you? It's good to see you.
Call a meeting to order. Jennifer, is any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the January 9, 2014 minutes. If there's any additions or corrections, need to know those at this time.
Move approval.
Motion second to approve the minutes of January 9, 2014. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members, Councilman Tenpenny, would you like to speak? No, okay. Councilman Blaylock.
This is in regards to 2014Z008PR. This is an area of town where we have already a lot of duplexes. And the neighborhood association has come to me. They really want to preserve this area of town and keep any more apartments or duplexes from coming into this area. Anytime you get a good sized piece of property with older homes, especially in, you know, the 100 to $125, $30,000 range, then the investors look towards that to put duplexes or quadplexes. It's currently zoned to have duplexes. We're just asking that this be reconsidered so that no more can come in. I do not know of any builder or investor that is looking to move into this area. We're not trying to stop somebody particular. We're just trying to keep, we're just trying to preserve this area. In the South Precinct, my district, over 50%, almost 60% of all crime is in multifamily homes. So we just are trying to keep the crime rate down and preserve the neighborhood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman McGuire, you wanted to wait, I think. Tenpenny. Councilman, Lady Allen.
I'm ready.
Councilman Todd.
Is my amendment considered? Okay, Lady Allen will speak.
Okay. Any other councilmen in the audience that have overlooked and would like to speak? Okay. Jennifer, any items for deferral or withdrawal?
There are three items on the deferral and withdrawal. Item number one, 2013SP036001, Ashton Park, a request to rezone from RS15 to SPR zoning for properties located at 4619 Hesse Road and 3375 Earhart Road, and for a portion of property located at 3391 Earhart Road to permit up to 155 single-family residential dwelling units. The staff recommendation is to defer this item to the February 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, 2014Z006PR001, this is a request to rezone from AR2A to RS15 zoning for property located at 6541 Redmond Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the February 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. And to item number seven, 2014SP007001, Tulip Grove, a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SPR zoning for property located at 1132 Tulip Grove Road to permit up to 48 multifamily residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. So that's items number one, four, and seven.
Okay. Member of the audience, be aware that item one, four, and seven are deferred and will not be on the public hearing for today. Commissioners, you've heard the request for the deferral on items one, four, and seven. Is there a motion to defer?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the David, Kenny, Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Before I read the items on the consent agenda, a notice to the public. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number two, 2014SP002001, Stadium Lofts, a request to rezone from IR to SPMU zoning for properties located at 1102 and 1138 Third Avenue North and 1121 Second Avenue North to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a modification to condition three, and disapprove without all conditions. Item number three, 2014Z004PR001, a request to rezone from RS5 to RM15A zoning for various properties located along the south side of East Trinity Lane between Jones Avenue and Lisha Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number six, A, 2014CP008001, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment, a request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by changing the community character policy from T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving 05 Policy to a T4 Urban Mixed Use 03 Policy for property located at 603 26th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item six, B, 2014Z002PR001, a request to rezone from RS5 to MULA zoning for property located at 603 26th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is that if the associated policy amendment is approved, staff recommends approval of the zone change. If the associated policy amendment is not approved, then staff recommends disapproval. Item number eight, 2013Z050PR001, a request to rezone from RS20 to RS30 zoning for various properties located along Esteswood Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 10, 2014Z009PR001, a request to rezone from CF to MUIA zoning for property located at 1812 Broadway. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 11, 2014NHC001001, Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Expansion, a request to apply the provisions of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District to various properties located along 25th Avenue South, 27th Avenue South, Blair Boulevard, Ashwood Avenue, Chesterfield Avenue, Hillside Drive, Natchez Trace, Overlook Drive, Sunset Place, West Linden Avenue, Westwood Avenue, and Woodlawn Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Just before we move on on that, I just, there's, most of the people, or many of the people in the audience are on this item. All the requests I have are in favor of that, so we're leaving it on consent.
Is the public in general, is it more than 12 minutes? That's okay. Everybody okay?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Item number 12, 2013, pardon me, 2003UD003002, Ridge View Modification, a request for a modification from standards of the Ridge View Urban Design Overlay District for various properties zoned RM9. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 14, 2014S015001, Horton Heights Resubdivision of Lots 186 and 187, a request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at 829 West Hillwood Drive and 780 Newberry Road zoned RS40. Staff recommendation is to approve with a condition. So to review, the items on the consent agenda include item two, three, six, A, six, B, eight, 10, 11, 12, and 14.
Okay. Read that again. You got item two, three, five, A and B, and six, A and B?
Five, A and B have taken, been taken off consent agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the items that have been requested with staff to be on consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those items now are, have been approved by the commission. The members of the audience, the items that will be heard today on public hearings are items five, A and B, item nine, and item 13. All the other business has been taken care of as far as public hearing.
Is it all, is it all? And what did I hit? What did I hit to bring it up? Is it just minimized, is all? They told me before to hit like eight or something. Liam and Bob, what did I hit to bring it?
It's dropping them too.
Okay, thank you.
It was minimized.
Oh, I'm sure I did.
I don't know what it is. I mean, I'm here to, I'm here, sir. I'm here to serve. I'm here to give advice.
Now, it scrolled down quite a bit, and then it went. Yes. Mm-hmm. Thank you, commissioners. Having to navigate the computer here.
Thank you.
This case is a plan amendment request for South Nashville. The request is to amend the land use policy from single-family attached and detached in neighborhood general to mixed-use and community center. This was part, if you recall, of the detailed neighborhood design plan done for the Nolansville Road Corridor back in 2006, 2007. In this case, this is a bit unique. If you see the properties adjacent to the Nolansville Pike Corridor, the one commercial property has a very shallow depth. So in this case, we were to compromise between the applicant and concerns that we've heard about increasing commercial encroachment. So there is a small piece of the property where the policy is being changed from mixed-use, I'm sorry, from residential to mixed-use instead of the entire two properties. So we recommend approval.
We're going to present both the plan amendment and the rezoning in whole one hearing, and then you'll need to take separate votes.
Okay. Item B is the zone change associated with the policy amendment just presented. Again, this is the property. It's on the south side of Harrison Street behind the existing BP. Staff is recommending that this request be approved, subject to the approval of the policy amendment, the view of the site, looking down Harrison Street towards the BP and the property. The existing zoning is single-family residential. It would permit one single-family home within the total land area, which is .13 acres. The proposed zoning is mixed-use limited, and this is just .13 acres, so it would not permit much at all in that area. Existing policy is single-family detached in neighborhood general. That policy would not support the mixed-use or the proposed zoning district. It would permit a single-family and MUL, but it also permits commercial uses and other non-residential uses, which would not be consistent with the residential policy. Again, this is the proposed policy. The MUL zoning district would be consistent with the community center policy if it is adopted by the commission. And again, staff is recommending approval, subject to the associated policy amendment being approved.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. Applicants be allowed 10 minutes, and we'll discuss both five, A, and B. If you want to talk on both of them, you can at the same time, and then with the commission we'll discuss them and take a separate vote on A and a separate vote on five, B. Be allowed 10 minutes as applicant, and you can hold two-minute setback for rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will hold two minutes. This was a consent item. I believe there may be one person that's here to speak. Early on, I'm Roy Dell, Dell &amp; Associates, I'm sorry. Early on, when this, when the BP people came to me and talked about expanding their zoning back, they actually owned the two parcels behind the BP, and they actually wanted to use both parcels. But, and being familiar with this community and knowing the desires of the community, and also talking with a council member, I felt it was important to not increase any of the commercial frontage on Harrison Street, and that's why you're looking at this shape right here. So the commercial frontage does not extend into the community at all. There's no new points of access at all. This is just a very narrow parcel on Nolansville Pike. It's the narrowest parcel that there is. There's no reasonable opportunity for this applicant, for this development to expand. There's very little parking there. There's a lot of traffic there, especially on weekends. Adjacent to the property and to the south, it's commercial policy all the way back hundreds of feet. So originally, I thought this would be a minor plan amendment, but, you know, staff basically said anytime you go back into residential, we consider a major amendment, and that was fine. So we mailed out, I believe, more than 400 public notices. We had a community meeting on the land use policy, and there was no one there in opposition. I've talked to a lot of people here. I think everybody pretty much supports this. There may be a question or two, and maybe that's why it was pulled, and that's fine, and I'm sure it's expected. I think one of the most important things is this does not set any precedent on Nolansville Pike by amending the policy to the depth that's shown. It's really consistent with the depths all up and down Nolansville Pike. It's just a very unusual parcel that's very narrow and has issues, and this will correct those issues. And so I'll hold two minutes in case a question comes up that I feel like needs to be answered. The staff is very, very helpful on this, and I appreciate their efforts on this. They are recommending approval, and I would, both amendment and the zone change, and I would hope the commission would endorse their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. I stand in support of this zone change. We've had two neighborhood meetings on this, and it was discussed in the meetings. There was no one that was against this at all. The people on Harrison Street, the phone calls that I have received, the meetings that I have, everybody was kind of in conjunction that it'd be a good thing for that area right there. So I stand in support of this zone change, and I hope that we can get this approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ashley Darty. I live at 308 Harrison, and assuming you can see what's up on the screen, if you see the two duplexes in the top right corner, the house immediately to the right that just cut off is my house. Okay, so a few reasons, I only have two minutes. First of all, when I knew I couldn't make the public neighborhood meeting, I emailed Councilman Tenpenny, told him I wouldn't be able to be there. Here are my concerns. I didn't receive a reply back. So it is not the case that the residences on Harrison Street are in support or have called and supported this. I didn't receive a reply to my objections. So he knows of it and hasn't responded. So my concerns are several, very clear, very basic, very reasonable. If you go along Nolansville Road, we have concrete, we have asphalt, we have concrete, we have asphalt. What is being lost here is one of the few spaces of green and trees. An aerial map can show you that. Google Maps can show you. Drive down Nolansville Road, it's plain to see. So this is the worst-case scenario. We should be greening our city, not making more parking lots. Number two, it's, whatever size the parcel is, that's what size it was when they bought it. They knew how big the parcel was, plan accordingly. The reason they believe are suffering from traffic crowding on that side is, as you'll see, it's a BP and the taco truck. And so the taco truck traffic blocks the BP parking lot, but they're putting two businesses on one side. The taco truck is the lower, right next to the triangle. Secondly, this is a great neighborhood. It is, as you see, duplex, duplex, home, home, home. We have black, white, Hispanic, single, old people, young people, young families, gay, straight. We have crazy libertarians and crazy progressives. It is an awesome, diverse, affordable neighborhood in Nashville, and there are not that many. There are not that many affordable neighborhoods. I bought our house for $128,000 a year and a half ago. We need to preserve this. We need to keep neighborhoods, there are tiny kids who live at those duplexes who run and play in the street. We do not need more traffic. We do not need more asphalt. Please preserve this neighborhood. Additionally, there's existing bright light pollution from the BP. One of the pictures showed on Harrison Street, looking at the overhang, what you can't tell is at night, there are bright lights affixed to the overhang that are not shielded or protected. So all the way down Harrison Street, where my house is, when I sit at the front porch, that's what I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned before, we've tried to preserve the character on Harrison Street. That's why we didn't utilize the two properties as whole that they actually own. The existing house is going to remain on this triangular parcel. The zoning will remain RS 7.5. There will be no additional frontage, or commercial frontage added to Harrison Street. It's simply squaring up the lot and taking some area adjacent to a large commercial parcel that goes back, again, hundreds of feet, in order to square this lot up and provide better circulation. This BP and the taco stand is highly supported by the community. It does have a lot of activity there. This will make it much safer, a much safer place. There'll be no new points of access. They'll utilize existing points of access. It's simply going to provide more parking, better circulation, and it's not going to encroach on Harrison Street. And so based upon that, I'm sure that's why the staff is recommending approval. That's why the plan amendment went fairly easily, very easily as a matter of fact, with the community. There was no one in opposition at that meeting. And I think the community as a whole certainly supports this. I've talked to a lot of people. So again, I would hope that you would endorse the Planning Commission staff's recommendation, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll discuss the request to amend and also the request for rezone at the same time, and then we'll vote on them separately. So Walter?
I was there. I'm just, I'm just.
Thank you. Microphone?
I'm sorry. I will preserve comment until a later time.
Okay. Phil?
I don't have anything direct on this, but I would like to encourage the owner of the corner station to take advantage of the comments from, that we heard about the light situation, since that would help the neighborhood.
Hunter?
Just have a question regarding the trees there, and if they were rezoned, and I'm not sure if it was mentioned, if the intent is to expand the parking area, can they just take all the trees down? And how would trees have to be replaced? And is there a buffer that would be required between residential and commercial?
There would be no difference as far as if it's zoned residential or commercial as far as removing the trees. There is a buffer. The buffer would be the smallest, or shortest is 20 feet, and the widest is 30 feet. And shortest has, or the narrowest has higher planting density, and the wider has a little less density. Oftentimes, people will try to use the existing trees within the buffer to count towards their planting requirements.
So there's 20 to 30 feet that would be required to be either remain, and it's, would be required to remain, but it'd be required to be landscaped. It could, they could potentially save some of those trees.
Correct. And that would just be along that, the red line to the east adjacent to the RS 7.5. They wouldn't have anything to the south, which is commercially zoned property.
And there are landscape requirements for parking lots? Would this qualify? If they expanded their existing parking lot, would they have to comply with all landscape requirements?
There are triggers to landscaping requirements as far as if the expansion regarding, like, how many square feet they expand. If those triggers are, or if it's triggered, then they would have to do interior and perimeter landscaping.
You don't know if it would be triggered, or you don't know what their plan is.
I don't know what they're planning on doing, so it's...
Okay. Could I ask the applicant, or Roy?
You'll notice on the south side, you see some fairly large trees. There's a drainage way there, and I think just based upon that drainage way, those trees have to remain. So the majority of the trees you see would remain. You can see a large tree on Harrison Street. Obviously, that's going to remain. There's not really much trees there now between the BP and the house, and so part of this plan will actually create better buffer than there is today. So there'll be a 20-foot wide, minimum 20-foot wide buffer there. We're going to have this as a sustainable feature, so we'll probably incorporate some green, you know, within the parking area. I think that would probably answer your other question, so...
Okay. So do you know if the landscape requirements would be triggered by the planned expansion?
Anytime you have commercial next to residential, the buffering is required, so you'll have that. You'll definitely have that. I would say that we would look at the total square footage of the interior parking and then make sure that where you meet the interior green space, so I think that would also be triggered.
Okay. Thank you.
Stuart?
So as I'm understanding it, the, from Mr. Dale's comments, the greenery, the trees and other green space up, well, show us what, what do you think he's saying that remains green on this slide?
The buffer yard would be required along...
Toward the neighborhood, that's required.
The buffer yard would be required along the eastern line, so along here. This area is zoned commercial, so it wouldn't be required here.
Will, what will there, if the request is granted on both counts here, will there be any, well, it actually doesn't touch Nolansville, the way it looks here, this lot doesn't. But, Mr. Dale, you've heard that some of the concerns of this, there's not a lot of greenery on green spaces or greenery on Nolansville Road. Can you give us any, will that basically go away, all of the green that's up toward the Nolansville part of this lot?
South, you see the little taco truck there, and you see a little red car sitting next to it.
Yeah.
There's a drainage way that runs through there, and I think it's significant enough that there'll be a buffer there that has to remain.
Okay.
And so that buffer's 30 feet wide. So the trees that you see, all that, the large trees you see on the south side will remain.
Okay.
And then as you go up that diagonal line adjacent to that driveway, you won't, you don't see any trees until you get behind the building. The trees behind the building would remain, and there'll actually be more trees planted between the proposed expansion and that one house that you see.
Yeah, I see. I guess our concern is that, you know, anytime we have a chance to, on a developed area like this that just was developed before we had standards like this, you go for a long way without any green or green spaces.
Right. I mean, now you'd have to have green adjacent to the curbing and all that along Nolansville Pike, but I think this will help bring this site more into compliance, and I, so...
Well, it looks like you've done what you could with that site, and I understand the feelings of some of the neighbors. We're on a, my family lives five houses from Freedman's, and we just saw the commission and council approve a rezoning to multi-use from residential on the, and that's lot from Freedman's, skipping an alley. And that was done without any opposition because the council member worked through that, and every single person there would support that, including this commission, because of the way it looked, not necessarily because we love the idea, but I would encourage your folks to do everything they can. It sounds like they've got the right intent on this, but we don't, we don't need to see opportunities lost when it comes to developed urban neighborhoods losing their charm anymore than is necessary. So I'm generally supportive, but wanted to make that comment.
Jeff?
No comments.
Jeff? No comments. Andre?
I had a question about the sort of trapezoid behind the house on the second lot. I didn't really understand why this new outline in red crosses the property line into the backyard of the house. I mean, it seems like it could just, could it, yeah, so that we don't have two split zoning sites, could we make it just on the property line that's adjacent to the BP? What was that? Is that because of the drainage? Can I ask the applicant? What's that for?
Well, the owner of the BP owns both the lots.
I knew that. I heard you say that.
And in order to square the lot up, you do go across the back of the second lot. So the second lot actually will have much more frontage than, you know, it'll be, it'll be a residential lot that has an extreme amount of frontage, but not as much width at the back. And that's necessary to square this lot up. I mean, this lot is just absolutely being squared up. If staff showed you, you know, their policy up and down Nolansville Pike, you'll see that generally those lots follow alleys or follow the rear of the property lines, and they are square. It's just a few instances on this side of Nolansville Pike where roads come in at angles that you wind up with these really irregular-shaped lots. This corrects that and allows this BP an opportunity to expand and still provide a really wide buffer. So that's... I mean, this lot is just absolutely being squared up. If, if staff showed you, you know, their policy up and down New Orleans Road Pike, you'll see that generally those lots follow alleys or follow the rear of the property lines, and they are square. It's just a few instances on this side of New Orleans Road Pike where roads come in at angles that you wind up with these really irregular shaped lots. This corrects that and allows this BP an opportunity to expand and still provide a really wide buffer. So that's, that's the reason for the irregular shape. Really, the reason for the regular shape is that the road comes in at an angle.
Right.
If the road came in at 90 degrees, you wouldn't have this, so...
Well, I have still have a question about the, the trees and just not to beat a dead horse, but I do think that a different perspective too is for the business owners to have, you know, shaded parking. If you're a taqueria, you want to walk under the tree and eat your taco.
Exactly.
That if you can keep some of those major trees, even if it's not necessarily in the drainage, I think it helps support everybody and it makes it appealing for doing business. Even, you know, you park your car in the tree and it doesn't cook at 100 degrees.
That's absolutely the intent. I mean, I, there's been a lot of discussion about this today on Facebook.
We don't need to go into all that.
In the District 13 forum. And, and so I, I think their intent is actually to move that taco stand back to create some places for people to eat. There's really no place for that now. You can't even hardly park. And, and that is the intent, I think, to create some green space, some shaded space. Those trees along that south will not be removed, especially the large trees that you see right there, and then some adjacent to it as well.
Thank you. To the staff, the only concern I would have is, I mean, split zoning is odd enough, but to stretch it over into a second lot, it seems like that we could draw the line at the first lot and not take in this backyard of the next house. I mean, BP might sell that one day, and then it's a normal house and it doesn't have split zoning. That would be my only uncomfortable, only part I have concern with the shape of this. While we're, while it's all arbitrary at this stage, it seems like we could at least keep it contained in the lot that we have, as long, is that possible?
Well, I think what you're going to see is the combination of the restructuring of those two lots. The portion that's going to be commercial will go with the lot that's on New Orleans Road. The, the two portions of the two lots that are on Harrison will be combined into one lot. So you won't have two lots.
So it is going to be reparcelled?
Yeah.
So we're not creating split zoning?
No. I think, I mean, because, no.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Okay. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, after looking and hearing the comments, as I look at this location, it appears to me that once it's all said and done, that it's going to kind of clean the corner in order to have more, better visibility. It's understandable that you probably don't take the trees out near the drainage creek because it keeps the creek from eroding. But I see no use, I mean, there's always useful trees, but I'm just thinking that once those other trees are removed, it does in fact improve the visibility. And it cleans up the lot, particularly if you're going to use the buffer, is that going to be kind of small bushes or trees growing there? They've got that buffer on that back line.
It'll be much of BS.
It will be. So if, if, if that's going to be the case, it looks like it will improve the visibility and the appearance of the entire lot, so...
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move with staff recommendation.
Okay. That's on, this vote on these separate, the request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan. Need a motion on that?
That's what I meant to say.
Okay.
Move with approve.
Got a motion second on item 5A to request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I need a motion on 5B to the request to rezone from RS 5 to MUL. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now ready for item number nine. Okay.
Good afternoon. My, my name is Melissa Saget. I'm here to present item nine. This request is for, this is a request for a zone change from one and two-family residential to single-family residential zoning. The zone change would impact 185 properties located south of Tusculum Road to the east of New Orleans Road Pike and bounded by the south by Brewer Drive. This is located in the southeast community plan area. Currently, there are only three duplex slots existing in the area requested for the rezoning. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. The existing zoning in this area is R10, which permits one- and two-family development. The proposed zoning district is RS10, which limits residential development to single-family only. The only difference between these two districts is the ability to construct duplexes. There are no differences with regard to the bulk standards. The policy in this area is residential low, medium, which recommends a density of two to four dwelling units per acre. The proposed RS10 zoning would not fall within the range suggested by the RLM policy, as the existing density of this neighborhood is approximately 1.8 dwelling units per acre. Removing the possibility of constructing duplexes would not be helpful in encouraging several critical planning goals. The request would impact housing diversity by eliminating duplexes as an alternate form of housing. Loss of duplexes removes an option for investment in the neighborhood via infill development. And additionally, the loss of potential density makes the neighborhood less able to support transit. Here we have a map of the neighborhood, looking at some of the neighborhood assets. The density supported by the RLM policy could be helpful in promoting community plan goals for housing diversity and transportation options. The neighborhood is served by two arterial streets. This would be New Orleansville to the east and Tusculum Road to the, to the north, as well as, as well as a collector-level street, Brewer Drive. The neighborhood is also close to several public transit routes, which are shown in, in the orange-yellow, as you see, down New Orleansville and to the south. I think that's Ocala. In addition, the neighborhood is close, in close proximity to the, the commercial corridor along New Orleans Road Pike, which is shown in purple. Staff recommends disapproval of the zone change, as the proposed zone change is not supported by the RLM policy in terms of density, and the request will not change bulk standards as they are the same for R10 as they are RS10. In addition, reducing the development potential within this neighborhood will not contribute to community-wide goals of housing diversity, access to transportation, access to transportation options, and infill development.
Is open for public hearing. The applicant, this is Council Lady Blaylock, would have 10 minutes of presentation. Is she still in the audience?
So basically what I've said in the beginning, we understand that it's going to take away some of the people's ability to use transportation and take away some of the ability for people to move in and build duplexes and invest in that area for that purpose. This is the desire of this entire neighborhood. As you see, there's no opposition here today. The Neighborhood Association Director is here today. But basically, this is something that the district wants. This, this whole neighborhood wants this, and we just would hope that you would allow the people that are currently living there to maintain their single-family dwellings, what is currently there. It's not trying to change anything from what's currently there, so that we want, you know, to keep the duplexes that are there, but we just do not want any more in that area. Questions?
Thank you. We'll reserve two minutes of rebuttal for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Terry Bear at 323 Forest Park. And I don't understand why the planning department wants to not let these neighborhoods decide that they don't want to be redeveloped. They like living there. And that's probably about what I want to say, is that people should be, neighborhoods would like to be left as residential neighborhoods with small amount of duplexes. They should be able to do that, and you should make it easy for them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none is a motion, or, I guess you don't need two minutes for rebuttal because they're in support of you, unless you want to speak again. Is a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Andre?
No comment.
Greg?
Well, I think at one point I redistricted, I rezoned about maybe 1,000 acres from R to RS, and I was just, I had one question. Are there any duplexes in the neighborhood right now? How many? Did we go through the...
Yes. We identified three. There's one located right here at the intersection of Tusculum and Brewer. I believe another one on Raywood near the cul-de-sac, and one on April Lane mid-block. So there are currently three.
Yeah, are there, what about the surrounding area? Have we identified how many are in the, or multi-housing? Are there a lot of multi-housing unit stock in this area?
For, for this case, I just evaluated the area that was requested. What they're asking, well, the current zoning would allow one- and two-family dwellings, so the residents would have the option to keep their single-family or, or build a duplex if that's their wish.
Yeah. So under the, like, the RM 15 and the RM 9?
Go back to the zoning. It looks like on, on this part of the...
Yeah, this is probably too tight of a picture.
Yeah. Yeah, we did not evaluate the, the surrounding area, but just this neighborhood that, where the zoning was requested.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this particular area. My district used to bump up into this area, and, and, you know, I understand, you know, preserving some of that housing stock and, you know, I'm gonna, I would like to listen to the other, what the other commissioners have to say, but I think that there's a lot of housing stock, you know, within this area if you look outside this particular, you know, that's the shaded parcel. So I think if you look, look in a bigger picture of the community, you know, there is a lot of different housing stock there. And so I would like to hear from, from the other commissioners about their thoughts, but I did want to get a clarification on that and point, point that out. Thank you.
Jeff?
No comment.
Stuart?
We've gone through a lot of discussion lately and happily have come to sort of a consensus on part of the discussion on density and, and expectations of property owners and neighbors when it comes to subdivisions. And I think we've done that without abandoning the policy goal of where possible, providing for infill development and more density. Where we have, and we haven't really discussed that. We've simply discussed having reasonable subdivision policies. So I wanted to begin by asking, how are, is this, I guess this is an area of town where there are existing compatibility standards through the, through our, our, our current policy?
For subdivision, right.
Right, yeah. And I don't know whether we did much analysis on how much potential subdivision there is.
Right.
I'm not sure there's a lot of potential for subdivision.
I would, I would think, given some of our recent experience, that people everywhere are kind of worried about more subdivisions, but, but, but the community characteristics out here don't seem to indicate to you that that's...
I think the size of lots, but it would be covered by the compatibility standards the commission adopted, yes.
You know, I'm, I'm convinced that we, we have made a good decision to extend reasonable subdivision decisions based on compatibility to established, built-out neighborhoods. This is a different question, and we, we've been working for a while on a plan that presupposes, based on good data, a need for a lot more housing options and a lot more density. So I'm, I, I absolutely understand why some residents and the council member would be pushing for this because it, it's, it gives some comfort. But I talk, and that's, that's a decision for the council as well. But from a planning perspective, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little, I'm still a little worried about it for the president it might set for us as we try to allow for some more density around the town. So I'll, I'll listen further, but I'm, I'm not convinced at this point.
Hunter?
Yeah, I, I too can understand the community's desire, but I think we've seen over the years so many of our neighborhoods changed their zoning that, you know, there's a point, you know, where we're going to have to draw the line. I do think each situation is somewhat different, though. You know, I was curious about access to transit. You, you showed the transit lines there, which makes a good, strong argument for additional housing options and more density in this area. Are there sidewalks in the neighborhood? There should be, but are there?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I don't think there are, there are no sidewalks. Well, again, you know, I think, I think generally as a, as a planning goal to look for opportunities for more infill and density, and the question that the Nashville Next program has raised is where are we going to house the million more people in our region? And so I think, you know, based on the staff's, staff's analysis of this, I think I'll be supporting their recommendation.
Phil? When I was in city council, I was faced with a similar situation, actually on a larger scale than this. And I fully, fully understand and appreciate the councilman's, councilwoman's comments. What I did to the district I represented, I'll still stand by. It was a good move, and I'm glad I did it. And in this case, I would support the neighborhood.
Walter?
Yeah, thank you. I'm a little perplexed about the diversity you had up on the screen about diversity of the neighborhood on one of your screens.
Diversity of the...
What was that? Housing diversity, that is.
Housing diversity.
Housing diversity.
Oh, okay. So that's good.
Housing choices.
You passed it.
Okay. Thought you were referring to a map, and I was like, okay.
Housing diversity. Now, tell me, how did that play in? You know, do you want a diversity of housing or diversity of people?
We're talking about diversity of, diversity of housing stock, not necessarily about the people living in, in the houses. So essentially, this rezoning request would remove the ability of people in this neighborhood to, in the future, put a duplex on their lot if they so choose. It would essentially lock in the, the single-family development that is there. So with, with regard to this critical planning goal, it's referring to removing an option from the bucket of choices that, that, that would be available in this neighborhood.
Are there any other options? You can replace those?
Well, I mean, the, the zoning is currently for one- and two-family dwelling.
Right.
I would imagine another option would be multifamily, which would be an entirely different conversation. It's not zoned for that. So we're just looking at what is currently available as housing choices, and this, this request would further whittle that down.
Well, while I can understand both sides of this particular issue, I have duplexes in my district, and I can tell you, it's not good. And I've never seen one that is good as individual houses. I mean, for some reason, it tends to not fit the neighborhood. And I think we need to look at something that will fit the neighborhood without having to do duplexes, because as I look at the housing stock as you referred to, I don't see a lot of duplexes being built today. Now, back 20 years ago, they built quite a few of them. I don't see them being built. So for that reason, I just think... I don't see them being built, so for that reason, I just think it's...
Well, sorry to intervene. It seems like in this, in this community, you see frequently what are detached duplexes. So it doesn't necessarily appear to be a traditional duplex. They're actually not connected, so that the design often resembles more than, more so a single-family dwelling. So in this district, may be an option? Yeah, yes. Yeah, this is not in the urban zoning overlay, so that could be an option, and it would resemble more so what we're familiar with as the appearance of a single-family dwelling.
Right. Well, like I said, based on what I've seen in my district and based on the conversations I've had with so many other people throughout the whole Nashville community, I would have to support the community on this one.
Stuart, you got your microphone? You want to speak? Okay. Andre?
I'd like to make some observations. One is that it, there was a, there's a policy set that was generated with a lot of neighborhood input. People from the area, the broader area, have come up with a policy that actually calls for two to four dwelling units per acre. So keeping that in mind, the way it's zoned now fits the policy, in fact, it could ultimately, the policy could allow more density. And I think that allowing detached, that the possibility of detached duplexes might be a good idea, and another thing that might help is maybe there would be an idea for design overlay. If the neighbors are in such harmony that they could talk about how they want setbacks or heights or, you know, sort of the scale of whatever building is there, whether it's a duplex or not, they might find some continuity for their neighborhood that keeps a character, keeps it in a way they want it to be, but still allows more people to move into it. And so there are some ways to put some controls on it without keeping the numbers out. And I think well-designed, thoughtful duplexes can be very, a very nice addition to neighborhoods, and it does allow something maybe more affordable for some people that otherwise they couldn't be there. So in that sense, it's not as homogeneous on an economic level, and it allows people who might need to get on the bus and get to their job to live in that neighborhood because then they could afford something. I think that's what our policy is trying to say. So I think if the councilwoman could consider some of these other things like detached duplexes or design overlay, it might work, help the neighborhood stay unified and keep its integrity that everybody wants, but allow some more affordable choices. So I think for those reasons, I would, I would move we disapprove according to the staff recommendation.
Got a motion second to disapprove or to approve the staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Should be to disapprove.
Okay. Motion is to approve staff's recommendation, which is to disapprove. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me see, a show of hands on this one. Two, three, four. Opposed. Okay, motion carries. We're ready for item number 13.
Mr. Chairman, this is item number 13 on your agenda. This is a request for a final plat, a two-lot subdivision for property located at 1510 Claremont Place. It's zero, it's 0.619 acres of property located east of the northeast corner of Belmont Boulevard and Claremont Place. This is a two-lot subdivision that was submitted on November 20th of 2013. If you recall, it was prior to that noon December 12th deadline the planning commission set. So the subdivisions, subdivision regulations that were in effect at that time were utilized to review this application. Two-lot subdivisions are normally processed administratively, however, at the request of the planning commission, this application is being presented today to the planning commission for a decision. Staff's recommendation is to approve with a condition. The zoning for this property is RS10, residential, single-family, with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. If you'll see, if you'll notice on this map, it's surrounded by a variety of zoning districts. You've got R10 zoning to the north, R40 zoning to the west. The majority, the large majority of the property on Claremont Place is zoned RS10, however, you do have a few lots that retain their R10 zoning. This block of Claremont was downzoned from R10 to RS10 late 2008, became effective in 2009. The policy in effect guiding decisions on this property in the neighborhood is RLM, residential low-medium. It's a low-to-medium density or intensity residential policy prescribes a density of up to four dwelling units per acre. Here's a view of the, a copy of the subdivision regulations or the section, the relevant section of the subdivision regulations that were in effect at the time this application was submitted. In using this version of the subdivision regulations, staff viewed Section 1 and 2 in combination. Here's a copy of the proposed plat. It's a two-lot subdivision, proposes creating a second lot to the east of the existing house. The existing house will be retained with this subdivision. Each of the lots is over 10,000 square feet, meets the minimum zoning requirement. There's proposed 80 feet of frontage on the western lot and 59 feet of frontage on the eastern lot. The density proposed with this subdivision is 3.23 dwelling units an acre, which is within the prescribed density of the RLM policy. In order to maintain the development pattern or the building pattern along Claremont, the applicant has also plotted a 60-foot building setback line on this subdivision, in which the existing house is placed behind, and a proposed house would have to be placed behind as well on the eastern lot. This subdivision, this proposed subdivision meets the relevant zoning requirements as well for the RS10 district. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with a condition. It's important to note, here's a view of the subject property and the immediate surroundings. This is an older view of the house. There's a little notch on the eastern side of the house that has since been removed. Just a note. That concludes my presentation.
Second, sign of this open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You may keep two of it back for rebuttal.
Good evening, planning commission. My name's Greg Terry. I'm the applicant with James Terry and Associates. And like Dwayne said, we submitted this on November 20th, at that time, under the one-tier approach. We've done several of these infill subdivisions in this area before, and so we are seeking to not, on the one-tier approach, for the approval of this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. I represent the property owner. What you are being handed out is a density study that my client has prepared, because the issue here today is lot comparability based on densities, and whether the density that exists today and as proposed fits within your policy. What's interesting is this is the largest lot on this entire street of Claremont Place, and so it is the least dense piece of property on Claremont Place. It is presently 1.6 dwelling units per acre. If you take a look at this graphic in red, my client has identified 12 properties, eight of them on Claremont Place, that have densities that are either in the range of 3.4, 3.5, and going on up into four and more than four dwelling units per acre. So you have several properties in this immediate area that is actually in excess of the existing policy. And while my client is proposing with this subdivision is a 3.2 dwelling unit per acre policy, if approved by this commission. So again, the existing lot is three times, almost three times, the RS10 base zoning district. It's nearly 30,000 square feet. Plenty of opportunity to subdivide that based on minimum lot area. Presently, that lot is not comparable to what's around it. It's bigger and too big under your policy. So if you take a look at this density study that we have here, again, comparing existing densities, and I might point out, these references are to parcel numbers where you see the dwelling unit per acre. If you go down Claremont, you'll see the address of two, not the address, but the parcel number of 200 and parcel 114. Mr. Colbertson, could you pull up the parcel map so that they could maybe track along with me on your parcel map? That was a fairly recent lot split approved by this commission within the past couple of years, and interestingly, one of those units has just sold a couple of months ago for somewhere in the neighborhood of 750,000. That's new construction. I think one of the opponents in the neighborhood has complained about the height of that new construction, but it's an increasing value that's being added to this neighborhood with new construction. And by the way, that price tag is the highest per-square-foot value on this street since 2006, since the housing bubble. So the uptick in valuation occurring on this street and the immediate neighborhood in Green Hills should be no surprise to this commission. So we contend and submit to you that the proposal, the proposed subdivision, is absolutely comparable under the Tier 1 test that the staff was instructed to use to view and guide the recommendation on this proposed subdivision. We are here today, and it's a public hearing, and you're gonna hear concerns, I understand, from neighbors, but we believe our client has done everything required of them under your subdivision regulations, under your policy, and has instructed of staff to submit a subdivision plan that is comparable to the densities around it. And we're at the intersection of two arterial streets, Belmont Boulevard and Woodmont Boulevard. We are within walking distance of that major intersection. There may or may not be a bus stop there, but it's certainly two transit corridors that residents of this area can get on quickly. Again, my client timely filed their subdivision under the prior analysis. We ask that you review this according to that analysis. We ask that you approve based on the staff recommendation. My client would like to speak, and his broker is here as well. In case you have any questions, Marcy Sweet can speak to the valuation issue going on in this immediate neighborhood. So thank you very much.
You be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, sir.
Still the same group?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Van Christian. I think my neighbors are going to be up here to present to you guys that I'm some absentee owner that lives in Los Angeles now, and when I purchased the property in 2006, I purchased it for my kids, my kids and myself. My kids still attend Franklin Art Academy. You know, I'm still very involved with Nashville. I just simply took an opportunity in 2010, just for a job opportunity. So I just want the planning commission to know that I love Nashville. You know, this is not a greedy developer thing. That was the last thing I thought of when I purchased the property for my family. So I ask for your support.
Thank you. Are you still a part of the presentation team?
Hi, I'm Marcy Sweet. I'm a real estate broker here in Nashville. I actually live in the Green Hills area, just down the street in front of David Lipscomb. One of the things that we've heard is that the infill is decreasing the values. I believe the neighbor next door was concerned that her value was going down, but it's actually the opposite. There were two, two lots that were recently split in the past year. One hasn't sold because they're still, it's under construction, but those were 50 wide, 50 by 200, and that home sold for 760, which was the highest price per square foot since 2006, like you had already talked about. So I think that the infill, especially in Green Hills, everybody wants to live there because of the convenience that the community offers, and anyway, I would ask for your approval. I don't think it supports that it's not, that it's decreasing the value.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal when that time comes. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Line up behind each other at the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to address you today as always. I'm here today on behalf of the Claremont Place neighbors who are in opposition to this subdivision. You're gonna hear from several members of several residents of the street who are here, and I also believe they're gonna be presenting a petition to you signed by, I believe, 30 residents of the street who are in opposition to this subdivision. Also honored to be joined by former mayor Bill Purcell, who's also here. As we all know, Mayor Purcell is a strong advocate of neighborhoods and maintaining the character of neighborhoods, and he's acting here on that capacity today. So thank you for your participation, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly want to respect the rights of the property owner. Certainly, when you look at it technically, they've got the required square footage to do this subdivision. It, of course, is within the land use policy. But what I hope to convey to you is just the sense of the neighborhood that, and the fear that this kind of subdivision can really be detrimental to the character and to the charm of the neighborhood. To provide a little bit of backstory, the first experience that I ever had with Claremont Place neighbors as a councilman was when they approached me in 2008 to downzone the street from R10 to RS10. I engaged in the neighborhood, and you can see with the exception of what was then three lots, three out of, I believe, 37 or 38 lots, the entire street wanted to downzone to single-family. To me, it was very clear that they wanted to maintain the character of the neighborhood that they had at that time, which was predominantly single-family. Now, I know that you could say that the subdivision would be creating two single-family lots, but, I mean, let's be honest, the reality is, is that what the subdivision would effectively do would be what the property owner would have been allowed to do under the R10 zoning. This is, to me, essentially the same thing as doing a duplex. And so, you know, again, I think it was extremely clear what the neighborhood said. This particular subject property was included in that downzoning. They wanted to maintain the single-family character of the neighborhood. I understand the need for infill development. I understand the need for subdivisions and increased density, but I also understand what that kind of infill development can do to neighborhoods. I think that I can pretty safely say that more than any other council member in this city, my district right now is being the most affected by infill development and redevelopment. I would argue with any other council member that says that they are experiencing more infill development in their districts than I am, potentially Carter Todd, but I really think, just in driving around my neighborhood every day, I think I would take the cake. And what is happening is, is our neighborhood's characters are changing, and it's a concern of a lot of people. I know you heard it, of course, when you were taking up the subdivision regulations a couple of weeks ago. You heard it loud and clear. You've heard everything that I've heard. So, you know, again, I understand the need for this kind of subdivisions in certain areas, but at some point, we have to be reasonable. At some point, we have to stop and say, wait a minute, what are we really doing here? And so if you'll permit me, I'm a financial analyst, and so number crunching is what I do, so that's kind of how I looked at this, this particular situation. I know Mr. Henry said that this, the lot is currently too big for the street and for the zoning, for the land use policy. I would argue that the two lots being created are far too small for that policy. And what I would say to that is, if you look at the current lot, and I understand that the one lot that would be created is gonna be about 16,600 square feet, the other lot that's gonna be created is somewhere in the range of 10,370. That 10,370-foot lot, square-foot lot, is only 38% the size of the current lot. Now, I think logic would say that if you're gonna do a subdivision, the two lots that are to be created should be at least pretty close to the same size. You know, maybe one is 48%, one is 52%, but this one is 38% of the existing lot. I looked at the five lots going to the east of this subject property and also the five lots across the street. I kind of calculated what the average square footage of those lots are. It was about 19,500 square feet. So what that means is the 10,000-square-foot lot that's being created is right over half of the size of the average lots in that immediate area. That lot is only 50% of the size of those average lots in that immediate area. So when you talk about comparability, I know that we're under the old subdivision regulations, but... but in my opinion, you do have to kind of look at the square footage of a lot when you're talking about comparability. And I really believe that this lot is nowhere close in that respect. So the one thing I would just leave you with is, I heard Vice Chairman Clifton say earlier, and I hope I'm not misquoting you, Mr. Vice Chairman, but he said that we don't want developed neighborhoods losing any more character or charm than they have to. And I think if you were to approve this subdivision, that's unfortunately what you would be doing. So I ask that you support the neighbors, and I ask that you vote to disapprove this subdivision. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Who are in opposition, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Bill Purcell at 154 Fourth Avenue North here in Nashville, Tennessee. I'm here today representing the Nicklesons at 1508 Clermont. I believe I speak on behalf of this neighborhood, and I'm confident I speak on behalf of neighborhoods in this city in strongly opposing this change on Clermont. The subdivision that is being proposed here today would have been rejected without question under the rules and procedures and precedents of this commission that were in existence and well-known to all of us until they were changed in the year 2009. Mr. Sloan and the staff confirmed this to us, and I know will confirm that to you. The subdivision proposed here would be rejected without question under the rules and policies that this commission passed unanimously with strong council support, reflecting the views, I think, of the city, the development community, as well as the neighborhood community, rules and regulations that you passed just last month. This subdivision would fail under those rules. And again, I think Mr. Sloan and the staff will confirm that to you as they did to me. Nonetheless, you're being asked to approve a subdivision that's resulting, in a resulting house that will be wholly out of character with its neighbors and the neighborhood. To, in fact, grant this request, you are asked only to look at the math, and I would say to this commission, you may start with the math, but as the councilman indicated so strongly, you have to move beyond the math, or a mathematician only would be making this decision. It's entrusted only to you, this commission, to decide about comparability. And when you decided this issue just last month, you looked at that house on Wallace Road, and you made a decision that that would not be comparable, though it was under the same rules, under the same processes. You ruled in four cases because you felt there would be comparability, but in Carter Todd's district, Councilman Todd presented strongly to you, and you found it would not be comparable. We would ask you to protect and save this neighborhood and ultimately protect these people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Barbara Nicholson. I live at 1508 Clermont Place. I live next door to the subdivision in question, so my family is the most directly affected. But as you'll hear, our whole street is very strongly in opposition to this because of how it will affect the character of our street. My husband Gary and I moved to Clermont in 1992. We raised four sons there. They all went to Hillsborough High School. We have dug in deep roots on this street. And when we moved there, the lady that lived next door, Mrs. Key, was the original owner, she was so proud of that yard and that lot. And I have a great attachment to the beautiful magnolia tree and the cedar and all the trees and plants that would have to be removed if this was approved. This lot's so narrow that we would have another long, very tall, narrow home there. And as what's happened in other homes with similar properties, our sunlight would be very affected on our house and on our backyard. So that's now how these homes were designed and set back. You know, we all have very similar designs and sizes. Like I said, you know, there's a lot of longevity on this street. That's what has such beauty and character, that people who live on this street, they love it so much, they tend to live there the rest of their lives. And that's what our intention had been and could be affected by this big house being built right between our two houses that had been next-door neighbors for 70 years. So Councilman McGuire, when he was checking on this for us, he found, we were like on a roller coaster ride of, you know, what was going to be approved or if it wasn't. So I'm asking you to give our street the same consideration and protection that all the surrounding streets will now have because of your new regulations. I have a petition from 30 members of our street that would ask you to not approve this.
Just give that to staff if you would. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for hearing us today. My name's Judd Baldock. I lived at 1494 Clermont Place, been there for about 10 years. And not a month goes by that when I tell somebody what street I live on, oh, I love that street. And you mentioned charm, and we talk about character. We moved to Clermont Place for three reasons: stability, modesty, and quality. And those three things still stand. These guys make a very good mathematical argument. We all know a lot of stuff looks good on paper, but with all due respect, my property value is what it is today, not because of this type of subdivision and infill, but because the investment I've made in my home. A lot of us have remodeled. There's young families on our street that are making our homes what they want to be. But to a person, if the original owners of those homes walked the street from the front, they wouldn't be able to tell the difference. So this kind of subdivision encourages 35-foot-tall homes, long, narrow homes. It encourages tearing down trees and putting in homes that don't fit the character and the reason why people love our street. And the reason why people love to live in Nashville are because of areas like Clermont Place. Do you hear many people saying that they love living in Atlanta? No. And that's what this city will become if we keep to encourage this kind of infill. We're not categorically against infill. There are some beautiful examples of well-executed infill down our street, but this will not contribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Betty Mason, and I live at 1511 Clermont Place. It's lot number 123, and I'm a gardener. My next-door neighbor at 122 is also a gardener, but I guess we could both take our driveways and put that together and have a huge house there, you know, make a lot of money, but we'd never have any daylight in our backyard for our gardens. So that's not going to happen, but my story is short. My husband and I approached our purchase of our house on Clermont Place in 1983. We were very careful with this. It took us three years to make this decision. It was our dream home. It was financially strapping but well worth it to us, the investment and sacrifice to enjoy a beautiful and peaceful street like Clermont Place. It's reminiscent of Norman Rockwell painting. This is where we would raise our family. The trees have always housed many, a large party of kids, just playing, enjoying nature. Every variety of trees can be found there. Across from me on the small lot in question is a gorgeous magnolia we've all plucked for our Christmas, animals, excuse me, I'm nervous, graduation parties and baby showers. It would have gone, it'll go away because of this. We all relished in watching many wonderful years of Halloween parties and parades on our street, safe enough to have the luxury of such functions and snowball fights. The street has fought congestion in many ways, such as being used as a cut-through for many years, worrying about people speeding through to get through Green Hills where their children and pets are in harm's way. I'm not against fillings, but this is not the way we want to see our street developed. I'm all for the new people that have moved on the street, have done beautiful things. They've been exceptionally beautiful, but I feel like this is going to add a problem. It was not our intention to live on a street without a yard, without sunshine, due to a house being sandwiched in between our home and another existing establishment. In order to nurture the landscaping, plants, and wonderful gardens, we all enjoy our Clermont needs to be kept as it is. If we had not wanted a yard, we would have moved to a two- or three-story townhome on West End and planted a garden on the roof or lived in Brooklyn. Please don't allow our street to be sliced and diced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Daniel, and I live at 1505 Clermont Place. My wife and four children and I moved on the street almost five years ago. We moved to Nashville 10 years ago, purchased our first home over in the Lynx neighborhood off of Harding Road on the west side of Green Hills. Our family outgrew that home pretty fast with four children, so we decided we'd try country living, and we lived in Piggan for a year. After a year out in the country, we thought we'd come back to the city, and we looked hard for a house for about three months. We looked and looked, and there wasn't a whole lot we could afford at that time and had the same charm of our previous neighborhood. So we found Clermont, and we've loved it. Looking back at our search, we realized that neighborhoods and streets that had restrictions were the ones that really appealed to us the most and that had the character and charm of the older houses, and you had yards where children could play. And with our four children, that was pretty important to us. Also, looking at that, we realized that the real estate, the guy, the buyers, the people wanting to buy houses, they couldn't move into those old neighborhoods to where all the restrictions were. So we were fortunate that, as Judd said, we had found a modest street that we could live on and our children could play. I work in residential construction, and I understand the monetary benefits of building and selling and doing these types of infill projects. And I also believe that infill is very important for Nashville, and I think it's a good thing when it's done properly and in the right locations. I feel like Clermont's charm is in jeopardy. Subdividing this lot is not in the character with our street.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Terri Bear. I live at 323 Forest Park. I also work with Sunset Community Citizens, which is about a block, has properties pretty close to that area, or the residents are. And I'm really concerned about anything that can be done to stop some of this subdividing of houses until we can figure out ways that they're not going to end up being cookie cuttered and that we have regard for the fact that sometimes these places are rentals, and the people that are living there have been living there for over 15 to 20 years. And a lot of these people are not poor. They're people that are on the road as musicians, the basic character of Nashville. And we need to stop this, taking every house and turning it into two houses that's not providing lower-income housing. It's trendy Alamoade housing that looks nice today and is expensive. I don't know that they, some of these may protest the time, they may just look like, oh, that was there at a certain time, it looked cute. And I'm not even sure that a lot of these houses are really going to be sold. A lot of them are rentals more than you would like. And I just, I really disapprove of this. I'm glad I came in here, and I think we need to have a lot less of this. I know that you've got studies that you asked the right people, and you only took down the names of the right people, and they said that they wanted this, but at this point in time, look at the stuff that's further down. They're bigger lots, not smaller lots, and I think we need to have some respect for the people who've lived there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Tulane, and I've lived at 1493 Clermont since 1968. Clermont is a short street with a population that includes many families with young children, families who sought to live here because of the nature of our neighborhood, a nature featuring friendly neighbors who know one another, a neighborhood characterized by social gathering, beautiful, single-family houses, no two are alike, and get-togethers such as the annual Halloween parade and neighborhood chili party. Many of us there want to avoid the overly tall and skinny houses that now characterize, for example, portions of Glen Echo and of many other streets in Green Hills. Those places where you drive and maybe you look around and you start singing with Melvina Reynolds, they're all made out of tiki-taki, and they all look just the same. Perhaps you don't sing that one. I understand that this council staff operated with a singular mechanism for filling out the comparability that was in the earlier section of the requirements for subdivision consideration. I'm afraid that solution has given, in the opinion of many of us, some answers that are far from the best interests of the citizens of Green Hills. Such would be the case in the proposed approval of the sliver of land at 1510 Clermont. This commission can do better. I urge you to accompany the minimal arithmetic evaluation of 10,000 square feet in this case with a genuine determination of comparability. Drive down the street. Have a good look. Healthy, established neighborhoods are important, and you can help this one.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Got two minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to reiterate that the present size of this lot is presently not comparable to your policy. It's 1.6 dwelling units per acre. That's the rural policy. That's zero to two dwelling units per acre. That's like having a lot out in the hinterland of Nashville. Given this location, the size of this property is certainly appropriate, given the zoning and its location, for subdivision. And that's what's in front of you. There are two 50-foot lots just down the street that this planning commission approves on Clermont Place just in recent years. And of course, any homeowner on this street under the existing zoning is permitted to increase the height that they presently have. The new construction on this new lot will comply with the height limitations of the RS10 zoning, just as anyone else would have to do who is constructing on this street. This lot is so large, it's, according to the surveyor, it's about 7,000 square feet larger than the average homes on this street. So we've got a 7,000-square-foot credit starting right out of the block. And I might mention, there's a very mature southern magnolia that was in the aerial photo. Mr. Cuthbertson, if you don't mind maybe going back to that aerial photo, there's a very mature tree there that would sit in front of this proposed home. That tree is within the 60-foot setback, and it would be in front of the home. My client is willing to identify that tree for preservation on the plat and make that a condition of this plat approval. Finally, I just ask this question to this commission rhetorically, are we going to rely on our policy or not? This commission advised staff that they are to review timely filed subdivisions according to one standard. My client meets that standard, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Please motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, who in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Not sure I want to go first on this one. What are the height limitations of the RS10 proposed zoning for the new home if it were to be built?
Well, the maximum height permitted for any structure in the R and RS district is 45 feet, three stories with a maximum of 45 feet.
And generally, along Clermont Place, do we know what the heights are?
No, I don't want to guess. There are two-story homes, one-story homes. I didn't analyze.
But no three-story homes?
I can't say that there aren't. I don't know.
And what, given the narrowness of this lot, what are the side setback requirements under the RS10?
Side setbacks are five and five for any of these residential lots.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
I guess my question would probably be a legal question. So just to clarify, this is not under our new subdivision rules, is it? Or is it under the old?
You've got to write this is under the old subdivision rules that were in place before the commission voted on the new ones. I guess at your last meeting, I suppose, on January 9, as was clarified by the planning commission at the December 12 meeting, this came before the cutoff, so it's analyzed under the old rules.
So from your legal opinion, does this new subdivision meet all the legal requirements?
Well, I think coupling with staff's presentation of having the policy objectives and the subdivision objectives and having, as you know, the legal department has already advised the planning commission to contemplate, and what we've referred to in these meetings as a one-tier approach to Section 3-5 of the infill subdivision criteria under the old rules, we maintain that advice to this commission that you should follow it in that manner. Thus, we believe that staff's recommendation is consistent with the legal application of not only the policy and planning objectives, but also our legal interpretation of the subdivision regulations. regulations.
So if this commission was to deny it, what basis would we deny it if the legal opinion is that we, you know, that it meets all the criteria? Is there any basis to deny the subdivision? I mean...
Well, ultimately, forgive me if this seems like a thick answer, but as a general rule, I recognize that the commission has the authority to deny it based on any grounds they see. And I think certainly the opponents have outlined some bases that they think are appropriate for the commission to consider denying the request for the subdivision.
Mathematically, does it fit? Let me, this is a staff question, I guess. So mathematically, it fits the one-tier approach?
Mathematically, it's consistent with the one-tier approach. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, this is one of those sticky wickets, I guess you could say for sure, where you have the neighborhood that thinks that it's inconsistent with the street. There are examples of a couple of lots down the street. What is the, show me what the frontage is again. Is it 50 feet?
Sixty.
It's almost 60 feet, the new lot. Is there any other lots down the street that are below 59 feet? These, yeah, 20114, I guess.
Right.
Gotcha. I'm going to see what the other commissioners say, but this could be a clear case that, you know, us trying to overturn this or not approve the subdivision could lead to a legal dispute if we don't have clear reason to deny the subdivision. Potentially, on the last, the last property that we did deny, personally, I felt like it was a flag lot. Now, that's my own interpretation, but I just want to point that out in trying to remain consistent. It would, it's hard to deny this for a particular reason. But maybe there is, and I'd like to listen to my fellow commissioners. I don't deny that it seems way out of character with the street, but mathematically, and I still want to hear from, from my other commissioners.
All right.
Obviously, a struggle. One comment that somebody made was that it's 38% the size of the current size of the lot. And I actually, when we were talking about subdivision regulations, where that can be appropriate, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I think of other neighborhoods that have a mixture of housing stock, small next to large, where they're compatible, they have setbacks, heights, things that work together, and it works. But it is more often, a more consistent version of that. I mean, if you think of Richland neighborhood or some of those places where houses are close together and some are big and some are small, and there's an opportunity for that kind of fabric. We dealt with a situation in a different neighborhood several years ago where the question of affordable housing and diversity of housing stock was brought up. And there was so much already in the area that it was a basis to protect some that wasn't. So there was a balance. And so I'm remembering what we did on Wallace, which was sort of, in a way, inconsistent with what our rules were at the day. And I'm thinking that if you take the bigger picture of this, I think I might be willing to be inconsistent with the rules of the day in that there is a lot of diversity of housing and in that area, a lot of choices. And that in this particular one where I, we're only seeing a photograph of a piece of the street, but it looks like the houses generally go almost the width of the lot and it's, that's what is there already. So to put in one that's narrower is the anomaly of the day, I think. So, you know, I'd like to hear everybody else's opinion too, but I'm trying to think of it in the macrocosm of where we have lots of infill, there is a balance. We want a diversity of housing choice and so if we want some choices that are a little bit larger yards, we need to keep some of them in places where it's appropriate. So it's, I just sort of want to hear what everybody else says, but that's, to me, that's a way to consider it, that we want to protect certain areas so that we can have the infill and the tighter development around it. And there, that does balance the choices instead of all infill, for example. I don't know if that's much of a case, but that's what I'm thinking at the moment.
Let me see if I can, with the help of staff, remember exactly how we've been dealing with subdivisions. Until 2008, I think, we, we looked at a comparability standard for the whole county, which was based on mathematics largely. Is that a way of putting it?
It was based on mathematics, looking at an area around it, but it also had a whole series of exceptions that were generally granted, dealt with at proximity to bus lines, activity centers, et cetera, which would be an alternative to the mathematical calculation.
Right. So there were some exceptions, but essentially, we had a pretty strong comparability standard that covered all parts of the county, that zoning, residential zoning.
You had a, you had a comparability standard, yes.
And that meant generally, depending on, I guess, if you went back to all the way, at different times, different factors, different math factors, but essentially, that meant to me, in the years I've served on the commission, which have been a few, it meant to me that we didn't really approve re-subdividing if the two lots were dramatically different and uneven in overall square footage and overall size. And we certainly didn't approve when they were dramatically out of character, square footage-wise, with the surrounding lots. Is that a fair statement up through 2008, except, except when we explicitly found some reason to?
I think the best way I could answer that is, I think you approved a variety of lots in different areas. I think that it's probably a fair assessment to say that it was extremely rare. I don't recall situations where you approved two lots that were radically different from each other in terms of, I mean, you tended to split the lot equally, generally, to maintain a certain rhythm along the street even, as opposed to creating a haphazard rhythm.
Something maybe closer than 38% and 62%, as I recall. So then in 2008, we changed our policy to go with community characteristics. That was going to be our new comparability test, right? That was, we wrote that in, but it's where community characteristics standards were in place through, through the plan for the area, that that would be our guide to look at requests to subdivide.
Well, I didn't call Doug on this, but basically, the way it was written and interpreted wound up being, as advised by our legal department, it wound up being a one-tier as opposed to a two-tier. We didn't differentiate that if you met the, you met the zoning, that basically that was the way that you interpreted it and that's what's been called the one-tier approach.
So I've just...
There were two elements that just had, it was reviewed as a one-tier approach.
And community characteristics was not part of that, looking at it? I guess I missed that. I thought we were told...
Are you talking about the community character manual?
Yeah, the community character manual, application to the specific parts of town. That was, we didn't just abandon comparability and say, well, if it's on for it, we'll do it. We looked at community characteristics as adopted by this commission.
Well, that was, I mean, what happened was in the 2009 one, I think that was the intent. That was not the way it was interpreted or applied or understood as we sought advice. I think what the commission did last meeting was to clarify that that was the intent of the 2009 regulations.
So we re, I would say reaffirmed, community characteristics as an important part of the, the look at subdivision request, but we also put in specific measurements.
Well, I'm, Doug, come over here and tell it, but basically what you did at the last meeting...
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Let's take a look at that. So we explicitly reinstated a goal of comparability and said how we were going to get there. Now, in 2009, eight, we began looking at subdivisions that, and I recall discussion of this, but we were instructed through staff reports to continue to look at comparability and lot size, I think. Doug, can you help us with this? I mean, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but we had staff analysis that continued to apply the same principles we'd had.
I think what you're referring to is the staff analysis that went with the subdivision regulation changes that led to what you have before you. And was that 2009, Bob?
I believe that it was, I misspoke in an early reading. I think it was 2011 when...
2011.
When they changed.
Okay. But in that staff analysis in 2011 that led to the subdivision regulations that you have in front of you, which were applicable up to 121213, the staff analysis said that this would be applied in a way where the surrounding lots, where you looked at the surrounding lots to determine comparability.
Right. And that...
As is stated in 351.
So for most of our, our history as a commission, we've looked at, at it through comparability with surrounding lots. We now do again. After we adopted the standards that were, I thought, based on compar, on community characteristics in those areas where we had adopted them, we continued to look at subdivisions and it was my impression that we, that after those new regs were adopted, we continued to look at surrounding lots, but I might be wrong. I seem to recall distinctly that we had three different staff analyses at commission meetings which, which, which looked at that in that way, but I could be wrong. So then we come up to Claremont, which I believe has been subject to some confusion because I know, I know from what we heard in testimony, I think that the council member was, was explicitly told in the middle of all this by staff that this could not be approved under our existing subdivision regs. Is that right? So then we, okay, who told you? We have some question about that.
I mean, all of my correspondence with Brandon Burnett now, who, I got the impression that it was among staff conversation. I don't think it was just him.
Right.
But I've got email communication.
Commissioner, is your question, is your question that if it were evaluated, if this subdivision of property were evaluated under a two-tier analysis where you're looking at lot comparability compared to the surrounding lots, and then a second evaluation made after that about whether the lot is comparable based on zoning and policy? If, under that, under that evaluation, whether these lots would meet that review of comparability?
That's part of what I'm trying to get at.
Okay. Well, if, if you did the analysis, doing the two separate reviews, first and foremost, is it, first, is it generally comparable with the surrounding lots? Then, after the subdivision takes place, then the answer would be no, that it is not. And then, does it, does it meet the second criteria where you look at policy and density? It does.
Okay. And in addition to that, though, I guess I was getting at the fact that I had understood from testimony from the council member that he called up in the middle of all this and was told, yes, we would never, we would never approve that as a subdivision. Wrong? I mean, before, before the, yeah.
There was a period when we were looking at things under a one and two-tier analysis and we would analyze them both ways. And that's why what we brought to the commission was that decision on December 12th of whether to look at these under a one-tier analysis or a two-tier analysis. And the commission, in the majority of the cases that they looked at on that date, reviewed them under the one, one-tier analysis and that's, that's what we did here. But there was a period of uncertainty when we, I think Brandon may have relayed that under a two-tier analysis, it would not pass, but under a one-tier analysis, it would pass.
Right. And I guess I can see some, and I'm not trying to criticize specific staff members at all. We have been appropriately engaged in looking at a new plan for Nashville and have had lots of overtime and lots of great work by staff. But I'm only trying to point out that things have gotten so complicated in this and so many different signals have been given out, that that led us, two meetings ago, to look at a variety of these subdivisions and approve some and not others based on common sense and comparability. That's what we essentially did. So there's all sorts of precedent, if we wish, to follow what common sense would indicate and look at that unusual suggested subdivision, which, which is dramatically different between the two lots and dramatically different from everything else on the street, except what we did about a year ago under, under what we've now abandoned as a test for subdivision. So I think it comes down to us using common sense and looking at all the factors. And I seriously don't mean to be trying to say the staff is screwed up. We've given you mixed signals, there's been all sorts of reasons why people could make different decisions. But this, this, to me, this, the idea that this should be done because this is just too big a lot, which was what was mentioned in the testimony. No, it's not too big a lot. It's much closer to the rest of these lots than, they're right there now than, than, than it will be if it's subdivided. So I'm, I'm very clear that in, even in a completely clear setting where we know we need density where it's appropriate, where we know we don't need to rezone everything from RS, that when it comes to built-out streets, which this defines, and if you've never been down it, you can't quite appreciate just how routine, how comparable each one is to the other and what a settled, completely built-out place it is. So I am, I'm convinced that we, that the case has been made, that we do not need to decide this based on what we did for a brief time and no longer do and didn't even do two, two meetings ago and never did before 2009. We need to use our best judgment based on what we see.
First of all, I would like to clarify that when we voted for the new subdivision regulations last time, we were not voting on a motion of what the intent of the previous subdivisions were. That was not the motion. So I don't think it's, it's fair to necessarily state that, that our vote last month confirmed the intent of a two-tier system originally. I think what it confirmed was that the subdivision regulations were not clear, were not necessarily working, were not creating, you know, were not preserving charm among certain neighborhoods where this infill is happening.
You're right. We did not.
We did not. We didn't clarify the intent of the original regulations. We also voted on four subdivisions and I don't, I'm not sure I can explain why we voted one one-way and three the other, except one commissioner pointed out that, for him, it was due to it being a flag lot. Is there any legal action on that particular case? I'm curious.
Meaning any, any action presently filed?
Yes.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And then, following the 12th, the staff had about 30 other applications to review. Is that correct? Is that... Is that, they were filed under the old regulations?
Approximately 30, yes, that's correct.
And which, based on our actions on the 12th, did you use the one-tier system or the two-tier system to evaluate those?
We were using the one-tier system.
And this was one of those cases, I guess, right?
Commissioner, at the end of one of, at the end of the last matter that was before you regarding infill subdivision regulations, I asked for clarification, and then I stated to the commission so that we were all clear, that we would administratively handle the rest of the cases using the one-tier approach, which was the majority of decisions made by the commission. And I stated that so that we would have some level of clarity on how to proceed.
Right. Okay. Well, I mean, similar to some of those cases, I don't necessarily like this, you know? I guess there's some risk that some charm could be lost, but I think you have that on any lot. Someone could build a three-story, 12,000-square-foot house on any lot out there, so, and so there's, you know, I think what's important here is that we're not, you know, the criteria that we are asked to evaluate this is one that we, through three cases specifically, were clear on how we were interpreting these regulations. The fourth one was somewhat of an anomaly, perhaps because it was considered a flag lot by some. And so I'm not sure how we can necessarily find this inconsistent or not meeting the subdivision regulations. Again, we may not like it. It may not be consistent, though it's not criteria for consistency, it's criteria for comparability. And so I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I can find a reason not to support the subdivision as staff has recommended.
No comment. Just one clarification. I'm not, I'm hoping I'm not heard to be criticizing the staff's analysis under the one-tier system. We did leave them with that impression, but of course, we, in any case, can be brought to this commission. It's not that I'm saying they made a bad decision, but that it was in our purview to make the final decision, and so we should. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So this was one of the 25 or 30 cases that was mentioned at that meeting?
Yes, this wasn't...
So why was this one not approved administratively?
It was on that track, but there was a request from the planning commission to bring this to the planning commission for a decision.
Oh, by the commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I don't know if we disapprove the application. Does that open us up for these other 25 or 30 cases that were heard since the 12th, or that were approved, assumed approved administratively, for any kind of protest or legal challenge?
I understand your question, but does it open us up to legal challenge, potentially? Typically, the administrative action of the department is less, has a less clear path to the courtroom than an action taken by a border commission metropolitan government, which of course has the writ of cert availability of appeal up to chance to record. In this instance, I would note, and this is as good a time as any to note it, in the event that the commission today goes down the road of choosing to explore a denial of this subdivision, it would be important to state the basis for whatever that denial is, could be that you, whatever it may be. Certainly wouldn't want to put words in your mouth one way or the other, where you think it's because the comparability is thrown off, or yes, we agree with staff's analysis, but don't think this aspect works. It'll be important to state that basis. And I think it's also important that if the commission actually reviews this under what we've described today and on other occasions as the two-tier analysis, it will also be important to state as much on the record for the benefit of clarity for that record, just in case there are further discussions on the subject in other venues.
Thank you.
I think, just, I want to clarify the record. I think in the last meeting when we approved the Wallace site in the motion, it was not, it was not denied because it was a flag lot. The notion didn't mention that it was a flag lot, it was just, we denied it as a commission. But that wasn't the basis for the motion. I think I have that right.
I don't think there was a basis for the motion stated in the motion. I think staff interpreted it that it was an irregular lot, it was not regular pattern of lots, and that would be kind of the argument that we would make. It would be, there were some unique situations on that that were mentioned in this part of the record.
And that's kind of what I was, that's what I was sort of trying to drive at. When I don't have, when I said I don't have a problem with something maybe being 38 percent or a smaller portion of its big lot that's being subdivided, I don't think all subdivisions have to be 50-50 if, I guess what I was trying to say is that word rhythm, if it fits in the rhythm of the area and the neighborhood and is comparable. Like, there are some neighborhoods, I mean, in Germantown, we did it too. We had some, you have some bigger houses and next to smaller lots and smaller houses. They're, what gives them their, the charm and all that that we all now have a historic overlay for is that they are comparable in scale, and there's something about them, the setbacks and things that make it all work together. And even when you have contemporary next to old, it can work together when the design works. And I think the, you could, this one is, if it's, if it's only, if it's so narrow compared to everything else on that lot, then it's not, it's not in rhythm and inconsistency with the rest. And then what I was trying to think, well, if their houses already are sort of, many of them go the width of those lots, it's not like there are lots of opportunities for little lots to be put in. So the rhythm might not be established this way that this proposal is being made anyway. So that's another, then I come back to the, well, where do we save some areas that are a different type of living choice than lots of small lots? So to me, that sort of makes the case that allows it to be denied. It's not comparable with the other lots, and it's not in balance with the rhythm of this area that is sort of built out. You know, you'd have to start tearing down a lot of houses to get smaller lots in that area. And do we, we're trying to say we want a balance of living choice, and so we need some choices that are a little bit, you know, fit this whole street the way it is. It's just, that's where I was headed before, I wasn't very articulate, I don't think.
Jeff?
Let me ask a clarification. If, in fact, we were to turn down staff's recommendation, what does the homeowner, what are his rights in the future? And how would the case then be considered if he were to reapply in the future?
First of all, as to the rights of the homeowner, as with any person adversely affected by an action of a border commission metropolitan government, there's the legal right to file an appeal of this decision to chance to record. That may not have been your most direct question, but I still have to say that part first. As to the land use rights, I defer to staff to kind of outline some of the particulars of what the options would be with regard to other development or subdivision-type options at that point.
Well, they currently have the right to develop this as a single-family house, which is the permitted zoning and use of the property. They could refile this for another subdivision under the regulations that you have today. You would consider it under those regulations.
And how much time has to pass before they can refile under those?
There's not a, there's not a requirement on that. There's a requirement on rezonings, but there's not a requirement, as I'm aware.
One year?
One year on subdivisions?
If it's substantially the same.
Yeah, if it was, well, okay. If it was substantially the same, it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the criteria, I can tell you that. It would have to be different. It had to be substantially different to meet the current criteria, so.
Can I ask a question of the applicant? Is the, is the, is the plan, we, I talked about consistency and rhythm and scale. Is the plan for this to be two-story in a similar way to the other sites on the, on the street, the other houses on the street, or is the plan for it to be the maximum three-story?
I would like to, I don't want to answer that more than, more than...
Oh, okay, sorry.
He's probably more familiar with that.
Is that a fair question? I mean, is scale something we can talk about in subdivision?
Yeah, hold on, you know?
Oh, it's just going to be stolen.
The real estate broker is talking about two stories.
Two stories. Is that, I just was, if we couldn't see clear to deny the approval, would the issue that would keep it more consistent with the street, could we put a caveat that it's, is the height is restricted?
Not under the regulations that you're operating under.
Okay. Then I won't go there.
May I ask the staff, is this under the Community Character Manual, under LUPA?
Well, this is under, this is under the, it's under, it's under LUPA, basically. I mean, that's what it is. It's not under the Community Character Policy, but, yeah. It's still, it's still operating under the interpretations of the old subdivision regulations, right? LUPA would take place with the new ones.
So if it's under the CCM, then you would have some regulations as far as the style of the house and the height, more so than under LUPA?
Under, under the new subdivision regulations, if this were reviewed and if it were consistent with the new regulations, which I think it meets the, I don't know that it meets either the 70 percent, I don't know if you split it down the middle, it would either meet either the 70 percent frontage or the 70 percent lot. In either case, the commission, if it did meet those criteria, you could put reasonable standards, which could be building location, height, setbacks, garage location, access, that would be necessary to maintain harmonious development pattern on the street, if it qualified under the new subdivision regulations.
Hunter? Andre makes a lot of really strong points, as Stuart did, for the two-tier system. If we were going to evaluate this under the two-tier system, because all of those things, consistency and height and rhythm and pattern and charm and all those things, might, might fall under the general comparability. But we clearly, at the December 12th meeting, found three very similar cases. We reviewed those under, under one-tier system, and thus, 25 or 30 other cases under these regulations, not the current ones and not the previous ones, the 25 or 30 other, and we confirmed with Doug, with staff, that they shall review those under a one-tier system. And so, again, I mean, they're all good arguments, and they're all, you know, it's all, you know, I don't necessarily disagree with the points, except that we are reviewing, you know, in my mind, we're reviewing these just like the last 30 or 40 applications were reviewed under these regulations, which was a, was a one-tier system.
Question? It is unusual that we review these, but I did not know it was a matter, I mean, to me, it's a difference between the staff continuing to go under a one-tier system and what we do if it's brought here. I don't know that we're bound, I think we're making a de novo decision based on whether it's comparable.
But that's the discretion that we have.
Yeah, we have that discretion. I would move, for purposes of speeding this along, that we disapprove this application based upon its lack of comparability with surrounding lots, and the two proposed lots being not comparable to each other and quite uneven in size.
Okay, you've got a motion, or a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, second to disapprove because, state your motion again, so for the record.
That the proposed subdivision is not comparable to the surrounding lots on the street, and that the two proposed lots are disparate and not even, not remotely even with each other in size and characteristics.
Okay. Motion second, other discussion. Okay, call for the question, let's see, show hands. The motion is to disapprove staff's recommendations. All in favor of that motion, see your hands. Three, all opposed. Well, this is one of those situations where the chairman has to vote. And I've got mixed emotions about it, and I've heard the arguments, and I could go either way, but I think in this case that this would have been approved administratively and along with the others. And there's going to be some unhappy people, and there's going to be some happy people. And I'm going to be one that's going to be most unhappy with having to vote on this. But I'm going to vote against the motion and go with the staff, so the motion, that case fails.
You need a motion to approve. You voted down a motion to disapprove, so you need a motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move we approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Motion second to approve staff recommendations. Any other discussion? All in favor, see your hands. All opposed. Okay. Did you disapprove that?
Did you oppose?
For women.
Move adjourned.
Okay, move adjourned. This is kind of emotional because I can see both sides of it, got friends on both sides of it, that generally my vote goes in the jar, in this case, been about three times during the last 12 years that I've had to vote, and it's not easy to do that as chairman. So again, the, if you restate the motion.
Motion on the floor is to approve staff recommendation.
And that is to approve the...
Approve the subdivision with the conditions.
Okay. All in favor of the recommendation, all in favor of the motion that approves the staff recommendations, going to see your hand. Okay. Opposed. I'm going to go with that. Change of my vote.
Okay, that motion failed. Okay. So, so I would suggest that you make a motion to disapprove. We need to, if you don't have, if you don't have an affirmative motion, then the subdivision is approved at the end of 60 days. So I need you to, if your intent was to switch your vote, then I need another motion to disapprove on, based on the reasons that were presented and...
Is there a motion that we can compromise on as to the, that we can do legally, counsel that says we're going to approve it, but with standards of the height?
He said we can't do that.
But I'm asking the council.
And I think that kind of turns on the difference between the new and old subdivision regulations to some extent. I think kind of the explanation that was given earlier from staff, you've got a lot less flexibility under those old regs with regard to the types of conditions you can put in place, particularly the design aesthetics that were described in some of the commission members' comments. Again, I defer to staff to explain on some of those particulars, but you've hit it on the head at this point. The commission stands in need of a new motion of some sort, whatever that motion may be, so they can take some action on the application at this point.
Well, we could also change the, be changing the future criteria judgment for that street. We had mentioned that.
We've already taken care of the future, I think.
Yeah, let me just, let me ask you a question. We've already taken, besides this particular case, we've already taken action under a different interpretation, under our new rules. So any future case is not going to happen on the street. It goes under the new subdivision regulations. This particular, let me get it straight, this particular one is based on the old one-tier interpretation. That's no longer the way we use it. We are talking about a filed subdivision application prior to our change. So just for the neighbors, I want you to be, you know, crystal clear here that, you know, this can't happen again, even though it's happening on this particular lot.
Thanks.
It's not happening.
Until we have an agreement.
So if we, right now, the, it would become at 60 days when it's approved.
It's an approved, right, by, yes, it's deemed to be approved.
So we need to make a motion, a different motion?
If your desire is to disapprove it, there needs to be a motion. If you desire to approve it, you can, you can simply leave it where it is, and it'll automatically get approved.
We've closed the public hearing on this. I don't want to make a motion without this question. How crazy would it be, that's not a good way to start, for us to sleep on this, to defer it for one meeting. Anyone who's not here cannot participate unless they view the entire proceedings, but we don't have our full, full complement here. we don't have our full, full complement here. And we may, we may come to some consensus in our own minds, obviously, we don't talk to each other, but I move, I think I'll move we defer this for one meeting and reconsider as a closed matter with whoever shows up in our next meeting, assuming that they have reviewed all this.
Just a second of that motion.
Can I get a clarification? So does that mean we're going to have another public hearing?
No, it's closed.
Okay, so we, we defer one meeting?
You're saying hold the public?
No, I'm, I'm saying, the public hearing is closed, we just, we re-debate, reconsider, vote on motions.
Anyone not here, then if they watch the video of this, they can participate, otherwise they can. Okay, we got a motion to defer one meeting. I need a second, or fails for lack of a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a motion second to defer one meeting, and the public hearing is closed. There'd be a discussion by all the commission members that are here, that are present here, that are present at the next meeting, and anyone that's absent, then they watch the video and participate in the discussion and vote at that time. All in favor of the deferral, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry for confusing. It's a complicated thing. Maybe more so by me.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, at no point, I never took any issue with, with my interaction with staff.
Right.
They've always been exceptional. Dwayne called me on a Saturday because he was at the office working, so I just wanted to clarify. I know we were in flux there.
No, no exception taken, councilman, at all. I mean, we, we know the staff works hard and they, so, appreciate your comments, thank you. Okay. Connor, you got anything? Historic?
No, I thought I would mention that we had a workshop recently to understand and discuss a challenge that we face that does relate to the Planning Commission, and that is that, and I've mentioned it before, but the detached dwelling unit and as an accessory building, which occurs often in the historic districts, have certain regulations, but a detached garage has much more flexibility. So, and they're, because it's not a dwelling unit, it has very, very few regulations, or it can be, it can be a lot bigger. And so it's a challenge for the Historic Commission, and I don't know if it's something our staff and Historic staff could look at together to try to bring some clarification to it, but, and I'm not sure what the right answer is necessarily, but there's very specific limitations, and it was essentially explained to me that in order to get the legislation passed to allow a detached dwelling unit in the historic districts, that they had to put some limits on it that didn't necessarily exist for other accessory buildings. And so, we're, as a commission, are constantly sort of faced with that challenge of what's, you know, appropriate in historic districts. So we may see something, I don't know, in the future on that.
Nothing from the executive committee? Anything from the courthouse?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got a little something. You'll have an opportunity to get your beer earlier, with that, for your beer drinker, and in his own. Yeah, so the deliveries would be made a little sooner too, so, for all your football, the delivery is, is 3:30 in the morning. That's for retail wholesale. But now, if you at home want to buy some, you can buy it at earliest 10 o'clock. You don't have to wait till 12 o'clock. That's right. Taking that football.
Executive Director.
A couple of things I just want to point out that the council did on their last meeting, appoint a new Planning Commission member, Lillian Blackshear. She, we've been in contact with her, and she should be joining you at your next meeting, full of having just reviewed the video and ready to participate in the debate.
Or else you're going to resign.
Also, due to a conflict with the Election Commission on your April 24th meeting, I've talked with the chairman and the Election Commission, and they have, they have this room scheduled, as well as the Metro Southeast scheduled. They have assured us that they will be out at 5:00, and so we will start that meeting at 5:30, unless there's any objection. Chairman said if, unless there's objection here, we would start it at 5:30 on April 24th. And we just need to get notices and information out. I would like to make you aware, and this has just happened in the last week, that Irving Hand, who many of you know, I'm sure, because he was the, between 1953 and 1964, he was the Advanced Planning and Research Director for the City of Nashville, and the Planning Director for the City of Nashville. And he has been awarded APA's highest award of the Planning Pioneer Award. He'll receive that in, at the National Planning Conference. Irving has been a longtime professor at the University of Pennsylvania, but, let me just read part of what was said when he was here. "Under Hand's direction, the original plan for metropolitan government for Nashville-Davidson County, Tennessee, in 1956, established a framework for governmental consolidation of Nashville-Davidson County, which was also designated as a planning landmark." That. "He also directed the staff and the support and the drafting of the First and Second Charter Commission for the Charter of the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County." "He was also instrumental while he was here as providing the legislative delegation the information that wound up being the background of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Baker versus Carr, and was recognized both by the president and the mayor at that time for the information that happened." In fact, there's a letter in the file from Mayor Ben West to Mr. Hand, which says, "You have helped make history in the reapportionment case. We could not have won this great victory for our taxpayers and of the community without your dedicated effort." So, anyway, I just thought that that was acknowledged. And the commission, I guess, last year did write, did pass a, and presented a plaque to Irving for his work and dedication here, so, that was when it is 90th birthday, so we did that. So, anyway, that's there. A couple of things we're still looking for, we still have basically four empty planner positions in the department, and it's getting really, really tough. We've got a lot of staff that's working way, way too many hours, and, and we're looking.
Have you thought about paying them real money?
We're, we're trying to pay them real money. We're working through that. Doug is on this daily, so, but, huh? It's, it's, it's an issue. It's a real issue in terms of, Dwayne is working on Saturday and nights, and Dwayne is, is not the only one. So there's an awful lot of other people. I want to show you just a new application GIS. This is up, this is one done by our GIS section for the stormwater on low-impact development. Craig, you want to, that's one that shows the location of bio-retentions, and you can zoom in, in effect, you can get information on these, kind of, kind of highlight, highlight those, and just show the others pervious pavement there, the map for that, green roofs, I mean, just kind of show, go, let's see, you have to zoom back out probably to see. And the green roof infiltration. This was, this was a project that Jennifer Higgs and the GIS staff did for stormwater management. It's just, I just, y'all don't see many of these that they put together, and I figured it's just to make sure that you're aware of the, the work that is being done. There's also a number of things in here about the, about where we are on Nashville-Nex City. We're in the process of transitioning the Steering Committee, which is Chairman McLean, Vice Chairman, oh, it's not, it's not you did, you resigned, but Jeff Haynes and Andre are on that, and we meet right here in this room on a key issue on next Tuesday, and we're going to begin moving into Phase Four, which is looking at the scenario development. There's a series of meetings that begin next, well, beginning of, beginning of next month on the translation from the old LUPA policies to CCM, to such a stage for updating that. And I think there's a lot of other information that you can see. The other, the only other one is, and we talked about this briefly at the workshop, students from Georgia Tech and the University of Tennessee will be in town on February 7th to begin their work on the suburban retrofit projects. The locations of those are listed in the, in the director's report, and, as well as subdivisions and all that we've approved.
Time-wise, are you still on schedule for?
We're still on schedule, yeah. This is going to be the fun time. It's, it's.
Short.
Noel, is, no, is more is, I think we've been remarkably well on schedule, but at this point, we start moving into policy alternatives and, and alternatives in terms of scenario development, and choices have to be made. It's, it's one thing coming up to what the choices are, it's another thing to sit through what the choices made are, as you all have seen.
Rick, for, for the rest of the commissioners who are not on the Steering Committee, I want to encourage you to tell people to get, keep getting involved in the Nashville-Nex process. I think the staff has just recently broken over 10,000 people involved, which is a great benchmark. But this, the, the big decisions are still being made, and we still need lots of public input, and we need lots of people to come in and help weigh in on these decisions. And so if you could go out into your world and encourage people to come participate in these future meetings, it would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. Any other comments? Adjourned.